Courtney, are you on?
This conference will now be recorded.
Well, so I'm on, on my county computer and I'm trying to get on using a personal commuter. So I'll probably end up switching screens here, hopefully, fingers crossed.
Okay. Well, why don't we go, we've got 11 o'clock, we might as well get started. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. And we have two items to discuss today. The first is the fiscal year 2020-2021 second quarter financials. And then we have the Klaasik County Resiliency Project. So we'll start with the fiscal year 2021 second quarter financials and I'll turn that over. Is this Jennifer?
Jennifer, your mic's not on.
There we go. All right. I'm working from home today, so I'm operating off of one screen, which is a little different than normal. So I won't be able to see anyone when I pull up the presentation.
We don't see the presentation.
I, okay, yeah.
Let's not talk and we'll put our mutes on.
All right. So again, I won't be able to see you, so if you have something, go ahead and just speak up. We'll go ahead and make this nice and brief. I've changed the layout a little bit on here. So if there's anything missing on here that you prefer to see, just go ahead and let me know and I can add it back in. But anyways, this is the second quarter financials for the 2021 fiscal year. And this was prepared, you know, a whole month ago, so numbers have changed since then. But this is just a general overview. We'll get into these numbers, the percentages as we go on. But just to give you a general overview, in the general fund, we've received 73% of our budgeted revenues. We've expended 40% of our budgeted expenditures. In the general roads and road district funds, we've received 20% of budgeted revenues and expended 29% of budgeted expenditures. Public Health Fund, we've received 70% of budgeted revenues and expended 45% of expenditures. So here we're looking at all the funds, the revenues collected. You can see if you look at this 2019-20 year, we're just about 2% under what we had received percentage wise of the budget in the prior year. And I looked into this a little bit and it's just, um, it's really in the capital special fund. We had received 606% at this point last year in the special projects fund. And that was state funding for the jail project. So as of this year, we've received 45% of that. So we're still waiting for some state support to get that increased. But again, 57% of the revenues in the general fund, that's, we're in a good spot. Oops, I guess that was all the funds, so sorry about that. And then here's the general fund revenues, we're at 73% of the year. So that's looking good, a little bit above what we've done in the past, at 70% last year. And then here is kind of a breakout of the general fund, what those revenues are. You can see 55% of those revenues that we've received are property taxes. 17% are timber sales. 10% are charges for services, license fees. 4% are intergovernmental revenues. 5% are room tax. 3% are other state revenues. 3% are federal revenues. And then just other taxes and additional 3%. So the bulk of our revenues are coming in, you know, the property taxes and the timber sales.
Question, please.
Yeah.
Last slide back.
This one?
That one, exactly. Commissioner Thompson here. That 17%, is that before or after we divide up the money and put part of it?
That is. So that is in the general fund of the 15,933,000. 17% of that is timber sales. So as I move forward, I'll show you, we've got 2.7. Go ahead.
If I could just interrupt Jennifer really quickly. So Commissioner Thompson, just to circle back on that question real quick, is that, that is, that is after all the distributions to the other agencies? So that's just the county's portion of the timber.
Correct.
Okay, so I would like to see at some point, a fuller picture of the revenue that everybody's getting from timber sales. Cause we're having a lot of chatter about timber revenue. And so I'm eager to have more information aggregated in a way that it's, that I can manage it better in my own mind. Thank you.
So, so we can provide what, what is actually received and then the totals that are distributed to all the special districts and to the county. And so a lot of that doesn't touch the county budget, but, but we do track all of it. So we will provide that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so again, of that 16 million there, this just gives you a little deeper look at how much there is in each of those categories. So we've received 8.9 million of property taxes and that's 94% collected of what we've budgeted. 2.7 of the timber sales, which is 77% of what we've budgeted. 1.6 for charges for services. And that's 55% of what was budgeted. As we get to room tax, that's 725,000, which is 92% collected. The other intergovernment revenue, 653,000, that's 19% collected. Other taxes, 109% collected. Federal revenues, 119% collected. And other state revenues, 44% collected. So if we look at expenditures for the general fund, these are all of the orgs within the general fund and you can see they're all. Yeah.
I have a question, can you go back one slide?
Yes.
To the, to the general fund sources of revenue that we just saw.
This one here or this one?
Yeah, this is, this is it. Does, does, next one. It appears that we are not seeing any hit to our property tax collections because of the pandemic. Is that? I mean, I think. I don't know if that's true.
We actually saw collections better than in years past. And in fact, we have also, we had a lot of people who had delinquent property taxes that paid those. So assessment and tax was very surprised at, at the turn of events. Cause we were anticipating that things might have taken a hit. But we actually saw our percent collected as well as the payments for past due property taxes actually increased. And we also anticipated when we were going through the budget process, you might recall, we anticipated a hit occurring to our room tax collections. And so we budgeted slightly less. And so that's why we're coming in so high there as well, cause we, we haven't seen that as a result of COVID.
Does anybody have any thoughts about that? I mean, I'm just really, I've been trying to investigate the whole issue of property owners, the hit on property owners from the pandemic, from all the no eviction orders. And I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble getting that data. I was actually going to go to Suzanne and see if she could help me out a little bit. But, so I'm, I'm just, I'm so surprised that, I mean, you all have any feels for what's going on?
I don't know.
I'm getting complaints from.
I don't know if it's on the call, but in conversations that we, we've had, I don't know if, you know, there were people who were able to receive additional unemployment benefits or stimulus checks. And if that was how they used it, I don't know, but we were shocked as well. And Dawn might have something more.
No, I was gonna say that it's, it's, what I would just say, Commissioner, is that it's, it's really so situational to individual property owners. I think that I'm not as surprised for the residential that the collection rate has been higher. I think for the commercial, that's where it gets a little bit more surprising. But I think that, you know, there could be a little bit of latency too. And it could be next year, we start seeing a little bit more on the collection side. The actual, the actual collection rate might be impacted maybe more next year. Just everything with the pandemic, with certain issues, there's just a latency to it. So, so that could be part of an explanation, but so.
Okay, should we move on then?
Yes, please.
All right. So here we have the expenditures by org unit for the general fund. And you'll notice they're all quite under that 50% mark. This is due, when I pulled these numbers, the December payroll that posts on January 5th hadn't been posted yet. So keep that in mind, those, once payroll and all the costs associated with personnel expenses, once that was posted, they got a little bit closer to that 50% line. So the other thing I noticed was a lot of the departments had budgeted for travel, training, you know, mileage reimbursements, all that stuff. And none of those expenses have been used due to COVID. So those are all under budget. The one that is high is that dues and assessments. And again, that's because of the one-time annual payments we make in that for insurance and audit. So that's in line with where it should be, even though it's above that 50% mark. Here's the payroll cost for the general fund. It is, let's see if I wrote anything down. It's about an 8% overall increase from last year. And that's a result of just increased FTEs, COLA step increases, health insurance, PERS rates increasing. But all in all, it looks as expected. Here we're looking at public health.
Can I ask enough?
Yep.
Excuse me. Yeah, I was just about to ask a question about the public health expenditures. I was expecting more, okay, wait a minute, let me ask this question correctly. Did any of our CARES money go towards staff costs of ours?
Yes.
It did? Okay, so, so we have, are we, were we made whole with that? Or will we have consequences in the future?
So if I can answer that.
I'm sorry, I missed that part. Oh, okay.
We have, up until we utilized our CARES funding through November 30th, we, up to that point in time, it was all utilized. And so we have been covering whether it was public health staff, public safety staff. And then we've also had other staff who have been assigned to COVID duties as well. We've covered the majority of all, all of those payrolls through CARES funding. Public health and public safety have also received some additional funds. And then we're continuing to work on where we might be able to utilize additional funds, whether it's through FEMA or other grant opportunities. So at this point in time, we are relatively full with our personnel costs associated to COVID.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. Good job.
All right, so here we have the public health expenditures. You'll notice a lot of those are down below that 50% mark. And that is the same thing for, that I said for the general fund, is that, that December payroll isn't posted until the 5th of January. So that was after I got these numbers put together. And then additionally, the travel and training and all of that is, there was no expenses for what we had budgeted there. Emergency preparedness, that is the one that is above that 70% mark. This is the one where we get that COVID grant reimbursement that Robin presents at most of the board meetings. So that will, once we get those adjustments put in there, the budget adjustments for those COVID expenses, that will drop down to where it should be. I think that's all I have on that one. And then we've got general roads here. And that's the same thing, is these are below that 50% mark. A lot due to the travel, the road maintenance and construction materials and services was low this year. Personnel's been low in the road admin and support. So yeah, not a lot there. And then here is all the other funds and org units. You can kind of see they're all over, some are low, some are high, but they're all below that 50% mark. Special projects you'll see is way down here at that 1.8 million. And this is due to the jail project. It hasn't got as far as we expected it would have at this point. So very few expenses in there per what we budgeted for. And then over here, we have the Westport sewer equipment and that's up closer to that 50% mark. And they've done a lot of upgrades and I don't know if Monica wants to touch more on those upgrades, but that's why that's a little higher there. But all in all, everything is looking good and where it should be. Let's see, and that's all I have. So if there's any additional questions.
Any questions for our finance and budget manager?
Now I can see everyone again.
Report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Klaasik County Resiliency Project. County manager.
Okay, Chair Quayle, members of the board, thank you. So staff wanted to have a conversation with you today. I kind of laid out where, where our thinking is right now on, on the overarching resiliency project and the two different facets that have been part of that process. And I just want to just go back a little bit without going through a lot of the history. But this is a project that's been on the radar screen for a number of years. And staff has done a lot of really good work parsing out what the issues are and parsing out some, some potential paths forward. What became evident to me since I came in to this after it was already kickstarted was that to really do justice to both pieces of the resiliency plan, we kind of have to take a step back and look at what our processes are, look at the resources that we have allocated to those processes. And also look at the timing, because there's so much going on right now. And to do a good job, some of these pieces will take a big commitment from the county and some of that coordinated muscle movement that I talked about. So, so I just wanted to talk first about the public works facility. Your board approved a contract with McKenzie at your last board meeting, which I think is, is a huge step forward for us to really organize that portion of the project, benefit from all the great experience that staff has and the homework that they've done. But then plug that into a larger process that includes board involvement and board participation. So as we kick off that, that McKenzie work, we would like to have a couple of board members join staff and McKenzie and walk through that process with us. Part of that is to get the board perspective as we do it. The other part is to allow those board members to also keep other board members up to speed on, on, on what the progress is. And we will include all the board members in regular updates. But having a couple of board members participate would really be helpful to us. At the end of the day, staff consultants can do great work, but all that work is in service to the board and the public policy process. So, so I'll work with Commissioner Quayle on identifying board members that would be willing to board members. We can only have two in that portion of the process because of, of issues about quorum. But, but I will say to all board members that we will keep you involved and we'll keep you up to speed no matter what. But McKenzie's going to be a big help. And so I think that we have the public works facility piece on the right track. And I feel comfortable where we are there. On the roadside, you know, we've had different conversations with the board. And as those conversations have continued with the public, what's become clear to me is that, is that we're not real clear or we haven't come to a complete agreement on what exactly that road element is. Because it could be a number of different things. It can be evacuation routes, it can be emergency, you know, routes, it can be supply routes. It could be a lot of different things. And dependent upon how you define that and, and emergency management might define that a little differently than our public works folks, different than ODOT, different than the cities. And so what has become evident to me is just that conversation about roads and how to use roads, how, whether or not to acquire roads, whether to gate roads, is a big, big conversation that requires resources, planning, expertise. And it's not something that I feel comfortable that we can get there from where we are right now. And so on the roadside, what I would recommend is that we just put that aside, focus on the public works facility. And then at some future time, if the board prioritizes that conversation of alternate routes, evacuation routes, supply routes as part of your strategic planning process, then we can develop a work plan for it, go through the budget process, resource it, and just know that that would be a significant effort on everybody's behalf. And it would probably consume other priorities, which I just mean that we would prioritize that. And it means that would take precedence over a lot of other things, because that's the kind of effort it would actually take. And so what I don't want to do is to put the board and the public and staff in a no win situation. And sometimes our processes actually get us there. And I don't want that. And I don't want us to learn from it too, you know, too far after the fact. I'd like us to make an adjustment now if we can and then, and then have success as we move forward. So, so I just want to kind of frame the issue from my perspective. And then we just really wanted to allow your board the time to give us direction, whether that makes sense or whether you want to modify that approach. But we are here to serve you and the public, and so we just want your direction. So, and I'm happy to answer questions. Monica can also provide a little bit more detail after this conversation about the next steps with the public works facility. But I just thought we could start with the policy priority discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Dawn. And I wholeheartedly endorse that approach. I'll open it up to the rest of the commission. Any comments? John?
Yeah, I also endorse that approach from this perspective of transparency to the public to, you know, allowing the, the board and the, you know, and their staff to, you know, adequately, you know, address. It's a whole separate issue more than just moving public works. So I agree fully that this needs to be a deliberate process on its own.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Excuse my informality there, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Echo what's been said. The heart of teamwork is good communication. As the county manager points out, it's time consuming, it's expensive. It's also essential to a good public process that builds trust in a, in a very considered way, in a very inclusive way, looks at various options, listens well, and then acts. So I absolutely support this way. It's Commissioner Webb's district, I'm curious about her point of view.
Yes, Commissioner Webb.
You're looking at somebody who is very, very grateful right now. I think this is a wonderful plan. I think this is absolutely the right thing to do. The, the, I think we've learned a lot in terms of how we talk to our, to our constituents in this process. I have the bruises to, to show through that process. But one of the things I like particularly about this is that I have always been frustrated what I really at, what, at, for me, seeing our emergency management planning as an integral part of our land use decisions. And, and I think that speaks, this, this idea speaks to that. And especially as we file it, the, the, the thing that I don't have memorized from the, either the, either the acronym or the words, but it's the thing that we're, the emergency management plan that we are updating, that we have to update for the state every five years. And we're kind of at the end of that process. And I think it would be very useful if we could integrate better that, that work with the, with the whole roads issue. Because to me, the land use issues and the emergency management context are much more than roads. There, there are other facilities as well. So I, I would love to be able to take a, take a deep breath and do what, what county manager is suggesting. And I think, I think it'll be, we'll all be more satisfied with making decisions in that context. So thank you very much.
If I can just, Commissioner Quayle, just reiterate and support what Commissioner Webb was saying. Our goal is to integrate emergency management into that conversation. And it's the NHMP, which is the, the natural hazard mitigation plan that was referred to and that staff is working diligently on and really identifies a lot of the resiliency and mitigation efforts for the county. So, so it is something that we are committed to, is to make sure that that emergency management voice is really prevalent as we move forward with discussions of transportation or really anything else. So thank you.
Thank you, county manager. Commissioner Banks? Can't, you're on mute. Your son's.
Am I here now?
Can hear you.
Sorry, my son's computer is a little sticky. I apologize. But I would agree with the line of thinking of separating the public works relocation plan and the roadway discussions. A point of clarification I just wanted to make sure of is with McKenzie Group, are they still seeking alternative locations other than the, the acreage over in Webb's district?
Yes, Commissioner Banks, McKenzie will be looking at, at various sites. I mean, some of them, they are going to identify through their process, but North Coast Business Park is another site. So we will be expanding beyond the sort yard, which is the current property that's been focused on.
Excellent. And then my other process of, or line of thinking is, is I continually struggle with the order of which to do things or the order of presentation of need. And I will always circle back to Highway 30 and its consistent closures that we receive not only due to accidents, but to other, other issues. And it impacts not only our tourism, but it impacts our eastern side of our county. And so when we get to that roadway's discussed discussion, I would like. And so when we get to that roadway's discussion, I would like to bring that forth to the table of do we have any alternatives? Can we explore communications with ODF? Can we explore communications with our Public Works to see? I'm not talking about getting a byway, a permanent road. I'm talking about an evacuation route or a residential route or throughway that would lessen the impact if, say, we have further mudslides or other issues that impact Highway 30. So I'm just putting that out there because I see that as a current need and it's kind of in our face. And I think I'll probably continue shaking that can just because I feel like it impacts the area that I'm representing. But on the other note, I do appreciate the separation of topics. I feel like that allows us to thoroughly explore all of the avenues and not get lumped up because I know with my emails that I receive, this mudslide kind of caused a little bit of confusion for everyone constituent wise in getting wrapped up in the Public Works relocation and resiliency because they really see resiliency and evacuation route of our area as important also. And so I'll just kind of keep reiterating that. Sorry, guys.
No, that's great. Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Banks, I agree with you about Highway 30. I would say copy paste for US 101. And if we're looking at that, you know, what can we do about 26? That may be too much. But this whole county, the whole county, we have to be thinking about alternatives. So I'm delighted that the county manager is talking about this. I'm delighted we're talking about it. It's a long, slow go. It's a methodical process. I'm happy to carry forward what we have to say here at the county up through Northwest Act because that's our access to the regional planning that's so important to the Department of Transportation's planning and execution. That's money allocation process. So that coordinated muscle movement in this regard is essential now and going forward. Thank you, County Manager and Chair and all my colleagues.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Yes, your participation in Northwest Act is going to be very valuable. Any other discussion? Well, I'm pleased with the approach. I think this is the right way to go. And I think part of the evaluation that McKenzie's going to do is also to study the current site, correct, of the Public Works building?
Yes, Chair Quayle, there'll be significant effort looking at the current site, doing a status of it and then identifying what the deficiencies are in the current site also. So.
Monica, did you have anything?
No, I mean, Don covered it. Yeah, McKenzie will be looking at alternate sites. They'll be looking at the ones, some of the ones that we've already identified. The sort yard. And then they'll also be looking at our existing sites for deficiencies. And if you were to remain in that location, what improvements, site improvements would need to happen for that location to be more resilient? We have a pretty tight schedule that we'll be working on. And so we have weekly meetings planned out. We start next week on Tuesday with McKenzie being down here to do that facility tour of our place to start that. And then the following week, we will be having a work session with them to go over some questionnaires that we have to complete in regards to identifiable needs that we currently have as well as focusing on future growth over the next 40 to 50 years. And then ultimately, as Don mentioned, we'll be looking for two commissioners to help through this process. You would be getting check-ins on a weekly basis as well. And you would be included in some site facility tours that they have scheduled out in the month of February to go to other locations to kind of be able to see what other jurisdictions have that are comparable to us. And then we will be going through a matrix that will be looking at the 12 sites, one of which includes the one that we are currently at. And based on criteria that the county has said that they feel that they need as well as what McKenzie identifies as kind of like the industry standards, we'll go through that matrix and those two commissioners would participate in that process as well. That would take us from 12 sites down to three sites. And then from three sites, then we would be doing some conceptual planning, seeing what costs are involved with the development of those sites and then moving down to a single individual site as a recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Monica. I saw a couple of hands. Commissioner Webb, did you have a question?
I'm sorry. I think I'm having some technical issues. My screen completely froze and my sound went out.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Banks, did you have a question?
I had a question and then also a comment. The comment was, is I really actually appreciate this process that we're going through. I feel like it is adhering to the extreme, you know, the emotions of our constituents and it's kind of honoring their concerns. And I really appreciate us taking a deeper look and just making sure that the process that we're following is going to, at the end point, be the best one for our county. And so in that note, I want to thank our staff for just exploring this with us and taking into account that this is an emotional situation for many within our county. And then the question I had is actually in regards to North Coast Business, the Business Park. How many acres does the county still own over there?
So it's just roughly over 120 acres. And that is a separate feasibility study that's currently being done because it has significant wetlands on it. So what we're trying to work through is McKenzie, also a different division of McKenzie, was selected for that project as well. And so they are currently working with the county, the city of Warrenton, DSL, and trying to figure out mitigation possibilities that might be able to take place. And so then ultimately, what amount of acreage is developable? And what those sites would look like with the developable acreage? There's 120 acres, but it's not all developable.
And how many acres have we sold up to this point?
Well, the 120 acres is what's remaining. Most recently, we've sold approximately 16 acres, I want to say, in the last five years. 10 of that went to Big Thieves, which is on the south side of Enzen. And then the other approximately 6.7 acres, I think, went to CMH. And that's also on the south side of the park then.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I know that it's been proposed that the North Coast Business Park be used for this. The whole idea of having a business park is to generate revenue. It's not to take it off the tax rules and use it for public purposes. We have to perform those public purposes absolutely in a way that's safe so that we actually guarantee the best use of taxpayer dollars. But the North Coast Business Park, if it is in fact developable as a business park, which I think is the point of Assistant County Manager Steele's study going forward, can we actually make money with this thing or do we have to find another use? So that's in my mind, the larger issue at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Toyoka?
Oh, sorry. If I could just kind of respond to Commissioner. The land development feasibility study will be completed prior to this one. So we should have that information prior to this study being completed.
Thank you, Monica.
My question was pretty much on the same line as Commissioner Thompson. I was like, I was going to ask in our study, do they have a line item for potential revenue from that business park? So then we see, what are we using it properly? Will the income we get from that business park outweigh any kind of public use? That was my question.
Yeah, we will be looking at it from a tax perspective as far as potential lost revenue and looking at it from the lens of different, whether it's enterprise zone, five year, 10 year, those sorts of things as well.
Commissioner Banks?
I just want to act as a cheerleader right now. John and Leanne, woo-hoo, those great minds think alike. I really appreciate that. And yeah, no, this conversation is good.
Yep. Any other discussion? Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I would just, yeah, for the benefit of our new fellow commissioners.
I think we lost Commissioner Webb.
I spent a number of years of my career working for the federal agency that is the biggest grantor of funds to develop business parks and industrial parks. And when I first hit this park, my thought was, am I still coming through?
You are now.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Man, why doesn't somebody fix my bed, huh?
Commissioner Webb, yeah, I'm sorry. You've been in and out, but we're not hearing you now.
Maybe if you turn your camera off, it'll reduce your bandwidth.
My connection has been renewed. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Okay, okay. One of, as I say, I think that this business park has been a long, very long term.
If you guys can hear me, she's going to switch on to Dawn's.
Oh, there she is. Wow. Something else.
Ooh, get me a computer like this.
I didn't know you were there.
My connection, I have no internet at home, so I'm going to be working here. I just wanted to briefly say that this, I believe that this business park has been a bit of a fiasco for the county for a number of years. It was never really developed. A business park is an area that a local government develops and provides the infrastructure for in order to attract businesses to that location. And that was never done here. First of all, it was, I think it was a very bad delineation because an enormous amount of this business park is wetlands. And it's very, very expensive for anybody to develop, given the costs of dealing with wetland issues. And there was never any infrastructure put in place. The road system is haphazard at best. I was ready to say when I came on the board, let's just sell this thing because the investment that it's going to take to bring it up to marketable property, you know, I doubt we could ever get our money out of it. And I particularly feel that it's a bad place for the Public Works Department to be, not only from the loss of the tax base issue, but it's not the right location in the county. We have, as we just talked about, our three major roads are all so vulnerable in any kind of an event that we need to be able to create some alternatives that work. And our Public Works Department is integral in case of an emergency. And the things that could preclude their ability to get their equipment out to every inch of the county is enormous from the business park. And the last thing, if we really do want to develop a business park, which is very different from an industrial park, if we really do want to market this as a business park, then we need to make it look like a business park, not a material storage yard. That means a lot to anybody who's investing in a business in the Bronx. So there's my rant. I promise that for the next two years, I won't give that lecture again.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. And this will be part of what, you know, McKenzie will be evaluating is all of these sites and providing us information and we'll be using that to make determinations going forward. So thank you, Commissioner Webb. We have any other comments from the commission? If not, we'll go ahead and we'll wrap this up. And I will see everybody Tuesday, right? We have a work session Tuesday. We'll see you all on Tuesday. Have a great weekend.
Excellent. See you, guys.
See ya.